Jared.
It's good, we're live.
We're live, excellent. I want to welcome everybody to today's planning commission meeting on January 13th. And we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Janet, could you proceed with roll call, please?
Sure. Commissioner Gupta.
Here.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Here.
Chairman Hansen.
Here.
And staff is represented by Monowitz and Fox.
Beginning of our planning commission meeting, we always set aside time for people to talk to the commission for items that are not on today's agenda. Do we have anybody who's requested to speak to us?
Hold on just a second. I do see one hand raised for this item, so I can go ahead and unmute the mic and have this person speak.
Okay.
Person I have is Ron Snow. Ron Snow, please accept this invitation and please unmute your mic and begin speaking.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I had brought up an item at another meeting about two or three months ago where the issue in our experience is that we're, the planning department, and I'm not sure how that relates to the commission here, but under the current policies, we're losing a lot of trees, significant trees, heritage trees. There seems to be a propensity of developers wanting to clear residential lots of all trees to build whatever houses they're going to build. And as a result, it's become routine for these trees to be removed. Part of the problem I see is that in the cases that we've had here in West Menlo, in our neighborhood, which is the University Park neighborhood near Sand Hill Road, developers have fraudently made statements and filed tree removal permits that just have incorrect data on it. They claim trees that are 36 inches wide to be only 12 inches wide. And so as a result, without the neighborhood sort of being a check and balance there, these trees are being removed or were threatened to be removed. I think one of the, one of the items is that there needs to be some follow through, and I think Steve had said he was going to follow up with me, but just with the COVID and everything, I think things are just hard. But there needs to be some follow up in the sense of holding developers accountable that when they make a fraudulent statement, that there's some recourse that county can do to punish that kind of behavior so that we don't have that, so we have only truthful types of data coming into planning. That maybe with the more important thing to help with that process is I think the radius of notification from where a tree is being removed is either 100 feet or 200 feet. It's a, it's a very little amount of distance where notifications have to be sent to neighbors. And that I would like to see if the commission would take on a responsibility to to readdress that so that neighbors that are impacted by that tree removal, you know, via the canopy of the neighborhood, the ambiance of the neighborhood, whatever the case would be, is that there'd be a broader notification that could be done by the county planning to ensure that neighbors are well informed of tree removal. So I'm not sure how you go about doing that, but there's a lot of support for that in my neighborhood, and I would think there would be support countywide. We need to protect these trees. It takes sometimes hundreds of years for these trees to get to the point of being a heritage tree, but it only takes one day for them to come down, and there's no going back once that happens. So my two points, just to recap, is that there needs to be some accountability for developers that make false statements to planning, and I would like to see planning change their policy of notification and expand that to include a far more number of houses, maybe the houses that are within visual impact of that tree removal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Just to remind you that we cannot take action on things that was raised in this forum. Do we have anybody else who wishes to speak?
Thank you. I do not see any more hands raised for this item, but before we proceed, is it okay if I go over the public portion? Thank you.
I would love to let Steve have an opportunity to address what Mr. Snow brought up.
I'd be happy. And I'm sorry, my camera's not on. I've got an unstable network at the moment, so hopefully that will change. But yeah, I appreciate the comments from Mr. Snow. As he and you may know, the department's in the process of completing a comprehensive update to the tree removal regulations, which will come before this commission in the near future. And that will be an appropriate time for us to address the points raised by Mr. Snow, which staff will certainly consider in bringing it forward to you. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Steve. All right, I'm going to turn it back to Janet, and she's going to update us on procedures and other stuff.
Thank you very much, Chairman Hansen. So for those attending the meeting on the Zoom video conference this morning with us, we'll be using the raise your hand feature in order to organize any public comments during the general public comment period. And for those items on the regular agenda, I will ask those members of the public who wish to comment to click the raise hand feature to raise your hand and to speak on that agenda item. For those joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak. Please note that members of the public must wait for my prompt in connection with each agenda item before using the raise hand function. For example, you cannot raise your hand at the beginning of a meeting for that, but if you want to speak on an item that's later on in the agenda. And also new and important to note is that I will announce the name of the last person who has raised their hand upon calling for a public comment. At that time, if people wanted to speak after, they will have to submit additional speakers' emails to planning underscore commission at smc gov.org, which will be posted online and available to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. We have minutes originally scheduled for consideration. We're going to postpone that until our next meeting. And so we can go directly to the consent item unless somebody wishes to pull the item off. I will entertain a motion for accepting the consent calendar.
Motion to accept.
Sir.
Second.
Hey, Janet, can you do roll call, please?
Commissioner Gupta.
Aye.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Aye.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Aye.
Chairman Hansen.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item. Pass, we'll move on to our first slide, first slide for general review and second item on the agenda. So Janet, can you read that in, please?
Sure. Item two, owner, Steve and Ruth Clausen, applicant, Robert Meeden, Medden, file number PLN 201900485, location 322 California Avenue in Moss Beach. And our project planner this morning is Lawrence Trong. Lawrence?
Morning, everyone. Good morning, planning commissioners.
Morning.
Good morning.
Share my screen here. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Good morning, planning commissioners. My name is Lawrence Trong. I'm the project planner for item two on the agenda today. The property owner is Steve and Ruth Clausen. The applicant is Ruth Clausen, file number PLN 201900485. And the location is at 322 California Avenue in Moss Beach, APN number 037118020. The proposed project requires a coastal development permit, non-conforming use permit, and design review permit to allow the construction of a two-story, 2,053 square foot, single-family residence to replace an existing non-conforming, 100 square foot, two-story, single-family residence that was significantly damaged by fire in 2015, 2015, located at 322 California Avenue in Moss Beach. The project also involves removal of five trees, two significant and three non-significant. Minimal grading is proposed. The project site is a relatively flat developed lot located along California Avenue and is R1 S17 DRCD, approximately 900 feet west of Cabrillo Highway slash Highway 1 in the unincorporated Moss Beach area of San Mateo County. The surrounding area consists of existing one and two-story, single-family residences of various architectural styles. Here is a street view of the project site along California Avenue. Here is a street view of a single-story family residence located to the right of the project site. Here is a street view of a two-story, single-family residence located to the left of the project site. And here is some further context of the neighborhood. This is a street view of one and two-story, single-family residences located across the street on California Avenue from the project site. This is the front elevation of the existing residence. This is the right yard, right side yard elevation of the existing residence. Here we have the left side yard elevation of the existing residence. And finally, this is the rear elevation of the existing residence. In front of you, we have the existing site plan. The subject parcel is approximately 6,000 square feet in size. There is an existing 1,800 square foot, two-story, single-family residence and a detached 447 square foot, two-car garage located on the property. The detached garage in the left rear yard is proposed to remain without modification. As shown on the plan, the existing front porch has a front yard setback of 11 feet, where 20 feet is required. The staff report indicates the existing front yard setback is 18 feet and 10 inches. And just as a point of clarification, that setback is to the building front wall. This is the proposed site plan. As you can see, the rebuilt residence will be in the same location as the existing residence on the property. The proposed residence includes an expanded front porch that will result in a front yard setback of 13 feet and eight inches, where 20 feet is required. The proposed building front wall will have a setback of 18 feet and eight inches, which is similar to the existing building front wall setback of 18 feet and 10 inches. This is the landscape plan. As mentioned earlier, the, there will be two significant trees proposed for removal, identified here as trees D, which is a 25-inch diameter at breast height, blackwood acacia located in front yard of property, and tree E, which is a 15-inch DBH willow in the left rear yard along the property line. The blackwood acacia is in poor health with signs of fire and smoke damage, while the willow is in fair condition, but located in an inappropriate location for its present and future size. The three non-significant trees, tree sizes are less than 12-inch DBH, identified here as trees H, I, and J, which are apple, bottle brush, and trumpet vine trees, respectively, are proposed for removal to accommodate the landscaping work in the rear yard. The county arborist concurs with the proposed removal and the replacement plan. No irrigation system is proposed as part of the project as the plants will be hand-watered. Proposed project involves planting drought-tolerant native or non-invasive species of trees and plants that are appropriate for the coastal climate. This is a side-by-side comparison between the existing and proposed first floor plans. As you can see, the proposed project will expand the front porch to run along the entire front elevation. Overall, the building footprint will be similar in size. Similar to the existing residence, the proposed project is proposing a second story, which will also be similar in size. There is a new proposed balcony at the front. The maximum height of the existing building is 22 feet and six inches, while the proposed building will be 25 feet, which will still comply with the maximum building height of 28 feet. Here you can see the expanded front porch and that second floor balcony. This is the existing and proposed left elevation. The exterior light fixtures will be dark sky. This is the existing and proposed right elevation. The wood siding will match existing color, which is native flora. Here you see the existing and proposed rear elevation, minor facade changes with the doors and windows. The trim and window color for the proposed residence will be Frank Lloyd White. The roof color will be charcoal. The proposed project will reuse the existing home's water-washed stones at the base. Here is the proposed exterior lighting at the bottom right of your screen and color material board I just mentioned in the previous slides. The proposed project conforms with the following policies from the visual quality and urban manuse policies of the general plan. A coastal development permit is required pursuant to section 6328.4 of the county zoning regulations for development in the coastal development district. Staff has determined that the project is in compliance with some of the following applicable local coastal program policies. The project parcel is on R1 S17. The existing two-story, single-family residence was built with a non-conforming front yard setback of 11 feet, where 20 feet is required. The proposed product will replace the existing two-story residence and front porch with a new two-story residence and expanded front porch pursuant to section 6137 of the zoning regulations. A use permit is required to enlarge a non-conforming structure where the enlargements will not conform with this current zoning regulation. The new residence proposes a 13-foot and 8-inch front yard setback to accommodate an expanded front porch, where 20 feet is required per section 6300.23 of the zoning regulations. The coastside design review committee considered the project at their regularly scheduled CDRC meeting on November 12th in 2020. At the meeting, the CDRC adopted the findings to recommend project approval pursuant to the design review standards for one-family residential development in the midcoast, section 6565.20 of the San Mateo County zoning regulations. The project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, CECL, pursuant to CECL guidelines, sections 15301, class one, for the residential addition of less than 10,000 square feet of floor area on a site in an urbanized area, zone for residential use, where all necessary public services and facilities are available, and the surrounding area is not environmentally sensitive. The proposed project conforms to plans, policies, requirements, and standards of San Mateo County Local Coastal Program. The proposed project is not subject to public access and public recreation policies of chapter three of the Coastal Act of 1976, since the project is not located between the nearest public road and sea. The project also conforms to specific findings required by policy coastal program with regard to locating and planning development and visual resources components, since Montero Water and Santeri District confirmed there would be adequate water supply and treatment capacity to serve the project. The proposed project has been reviewed and found to be in compliance with the design review standards for one and one-family and two-family residential development in the midcoast. As mentioned previously, the CDRC recommended project approval on November 12th, 2020. For the non-conforming use permit, that the establishment, maintenance, and or conducting of the use will not, under the circumstance of the particular case, result in a significant adverse impact to coastal resources or be detrimental to the public welfare or injures to property or improvements in said neighborhood. The proposed residence will be in the same location on the property and will be compatible in design and finished materials to surrounding, single-family residential development as determined by the coastside designer committee on November 12th in 2020. In correspondence received on November 2nd in 2020, the Mid Coast Community Council, MCC, indicated that they have no comments. Therefore, staff's recommendation is that the planning commission approve the coastal development permit, non-conforming use permit, and design review permit, PLN 201900485, by making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval and attachment A of the staff report. And this concludes my presentation for item two.
Thank you very much. I'll open it up now for the commission for questions, and I'll start off with Commissioner Ketchum. Do you have any questions, staff?
Yes, thank you. Just to clarify and see if I understand about the front setback, the existing front setback is measured to the front wall, and it didn't include the existing 12-foot wide front porch. But the proposed front porch that goes the width of the house is now is now included. Am I, am I understanding this? And that's why the encroachment has increased because the existing porch wasn't counted and the new porch will be?
Yes, so as a clarification, in the staff report, we counted the setback as 18 feet and 10 inches, which is from the front property line to the front wall of the existing residence. And the existing porch is currently sitting 11 feet from the front property line.
Okay.
Um, so I apologize for that confusion. And the proposed residence will have a similar setback in terms of the building front wall at 18 feet and 10 inches, more or less. And is actually encroaching less with the new proposed residence because the existing front porch currently sits 11 feet from the property line, whereas the proposed expanded front porch was at 13 feet and eight inches from the front property line. So it's a, it's a, it's a less of an encroachment.
Thank you. That helps very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Commissioner Gupta, do you have any questions?
Um, yes. Thank you. My, my question, first one, is that I read that the new utilities will go underground, will be underground, which I believe includes yeah, I don't have that in front of me, but what does that include? That's my question.
I, I believe it includes PG&E, and of course, all of the other utilities, water and sewer as well.
Okay. And so when we say PG&E, is that new, new connections that come in from the street, which will be underground?
I believe currently it may be, and the property owner can correct me if I'm wrong, because I personally haven't been to the site, but I believe it's currently not underground. So with the new proposed project, it will comply and will be underground.
Okay, okay. So, so those would be replays, basically.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Okay, so, so yeah, so new, just the new ones, that is what confused me. Okay, thank you for clarification there. The second question that I have is could you, on your drawings, point out which are the non-significant trees? I couldn't see all three of them.
Yes. Do you see my screen?
Yes, I do.
So J is on, is located in the middle of the site, sort of on the right side yard.
Okay. Right.
And then I is over here by, behind the existing garage.
Okay.
And then H is over here in the rear yard next to L and E.
Okay. Um, and and these lines around it, the going by the side of the house, what, what does that indicate? Is that the grading?
I believe the property owners have some landscaping plans that they have a better idea in how to describe what they are proposing.
Understood.
I do not believe it's a, it's a very minimal grading for this project. I believe the grading amount total is less than 25 cubic yards. It was very insignificant, but I would defer to the property owners to describe what they propose in terms of the landscaping.
Okay, so, so these three trees basically are being removed for, because of the plans that they have for landscaping.
I believe so.
They are not, okay.
Yeah, I believe so. They are also not significant trees. They are approximately six inches or less. The three non-significant.
Okay.
About six inches, correct.
Okay. And, and then there is something in the staff reports, as well as arborist reports about this tree D, D, I believe.
He is, you have that in front?
Right, the one in front. And that talks about that that is on the county land. Is that true?
I believe it is more or less in the public right of way, and it may involve Department of Public Works for an encroachment permit, I believe. It's sitting in front of the house, but I believe it's sort of an area where it's the owner's responsibility to remove and obtain the proper permits from planning and public works because it is in the right of way.
Okay, okay. And is E the tree? Thank you for that. The E is also is it on owner's property or is it, it, it looks like it's right on
Yeah, so.
property line?
Yeah, E is a willow tree, I believe approximately 15-inch DBH, which is, which is a significant tree. And the property owners did get consent from the adjacent neighbor who shares that property line with them to remove the tree.
Okay. Okay, so they are in agreement there. So they are in agreement there. That's all I have at this time. Thank you, Lawrence.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Santa Cruz, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do, Commissioner. If you go back exactly, just keep that slide, landscape plan slide. I have also a question than Commissioner Gupta was referring to. Based on the highlight, I understood that D and E are the two significant trees that we're talking about, right?
Correct.
And both of them are far away from the construction area. E is in the middle of the two properties, and D is supposedly be in, and the right-of-way or, or, but you're saying that it's part of the owner's responsibility to train the tree or something, right?
Correct.
So I don't see the need to remove those two trees, which are not impinging or affecting the construction of that property. And yet, the D is part of the right-of-way, and, and, you know, it requires a little bit more complication to remove that tree. I'm totally against removing trees, especially when there are significant trees, and specifically in this particular project, which is not in the middle or affecting in any way, shape, or form the constructions that they're referring to. Now, that's a tutorial for me. But the second part that I wanted to, to talk about is the person who talks initial, at the beginning of this meeting, it refers to the fact that we need to have accountability for developer. And due to the fact that you have not visited the project or anybody in the city, I assume, or the county have visited the, the project, how do we assume that the, the width of, or condition of the trees, the specifically the significant trees, are in fact what the developer stated? Because I am so in favor of that accountability, of making sure that people who are describing wrong the significant trees are fined or are penalized for doing so. So at what point in this project are you or anybody who can do an accountability on this type of project, specifically on the significant tree, planning to go and do that?
Thank you for your question, Commissioner Santa Cruz. As I mentioned in my presentation, tree D is, is in poor condition, per the arborist report. It was significantly damaged by the fire of the property. And per the arborist report, it is also within the critically, critical root zone, where a construction of the house will impact the roots. So we do rely on professional certified arborists, and we do have an arborist report. And the county arborist, our own county arborist, has reviewed the tree and has concurred with the arborist report that the property owners have hired. And tree D is, tree D was, did receive, did apply for a separate tree removal permit before the proposed house. We, and we just decided to put it under this umbrella as a one project. But tree D has been significantly damaged due to fire. And for tree E, the arborist report also recommends removal because of its present size. Future use is not, is not good for that location. And I will refer to the professional arborist report for his insight on that. And the property owner and the neighbor who shared the tree, so to speak, because of the property line, have both agreed to remove it. I would defer to the property owner to elaborate further on tree E, but for tree D, it is significantly damaged, and it would be in the CRZ, the Critical Root Zone, in construction.
Do you have pictures of the, of the trees, the schedules to be removed, Mr. Trump?
I believe they are in the arborist report. I can check. One moment.
I remember seeing pictures of the trees in the staff report.
Yes, I can refer to the staff report, but I do have a picture. I believe there's a tree here from the applicant, but let me check the staff report.
I, I believe on, on our report is like page sixty-three.
Yeah.
Or.
It's kind of, it's kind of far.
Sorry, yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of far, so let me pull both up. Do you guys see my screen again?
Yeah.
Yes.
This is a closer view than the staff report picture. Unfortunately, the, I believe the applicant has a hard, physical picture that they submitted that clearly shows the fire damage, which should be on the other side of this tree branch root. But I don't know if we have that here and there. Photos.
Lawrence, what species of tree is that?
Oh, here, this blackwood acacia.
It's acacia, okay, thank you.
I believe this is another view of the tree.
So, but the tree, Mr. Trump, is not dead, I can see. I mean, it has some leaf and, 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 you know, maybe the trunk, it's kind of like the, like brownish in damage, maybe. But the tree is still alive, I can see, right?
I, I, I can't agree or disagree with you, sir. I just rely on the professional arborist report. I, I, I admittedly do not know too much about alive or dead trees.
But you can see.
I'll be happy to comment on that, but I'd like the commissioners to discuss first, because I'm sure commissioners have other thoughts as well. So, did you want to show the other tree, Lawrence, that's subject to?
Oh, yeah, sure. I believe this is the willow tree. It's kind of hard to tell the condition from this, but.
Does the E or the D?
This is the E, sir.
But the E, it's, but the E that you're referring, the picture, is close to the property, but that's the old property that it's, that wants to remove that building, which is going to be the new building, build that, that it might be affecting by, it's far away from the construction, as you can see in the diagram. Is that the one, or you believe that that is the one?
This is what the arborist report identifies as the willow tree.
Okay.
He's not in this report.
That's okay, don't worry then. I just needed to see the two trees.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Those are my questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ramirez, you have any questions, the staff?
No, I, I did, but they have been covered on the previous questions from the commissioners. So I'm good at the moment.
Thank you. Okay, now I'm going to give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission if they so wish. If the applicant wished to speak.
This is Robert Metta, and I'm the architect. Good morning, commissioners. Lawrence, thank you for getting us to this point so far. If I can, if you have any other comments about the landscaping, I can defer to Ruth, the cost and the owner. But otherwise, I'm here to answer any questions about the design of the home and our thoughts behind how we came to this point with the design.
Okay. So I'll start off again with Commissioner Ketchum. Do you have any questions of the applicant?
No, thanks.
Commissioner Gupta?
Just one moment. Chair answer. I think the planner covered or mentioned that that most of the footprint of the existing home plus the proposed home are kind of similar. So Mr. Architect, would you be able to point out what are the areas that are really changing?
I would say that the change is, if you go back to that previous slide, Lawrence, with the site plan, the proposed, right there. It is the hatched area at the rear. We have a slight extension to the rear with an overhang at the master bedroom. And the overhang doesn't contribute to any further coverage, but it is, I think architecturally, it helps with the exterior elevation. And that is the extent of most of the increase.
Excuse me, you'll have to go back a little. Which is the front and which is the back in this drawing?
If you're on the left, that is the front. And we held the existing footprint area there. And at the rear, we slightly, which is on the right, we slightly encroached into the rear to accommodate a slightly enlarged footprint. And at the second floor, there is a bit of a can of weaver. So those are the two areas that I would draw your attention to.
Okay, okay. So, so this is, so that footprint, which is hatched, you are saying, stays the same? Is that correct?
The, the hatch is the new, that is the crosshatching. And then the single hatching is the footprint of the old. But really, they're overlaid completely over each other, so it's hard to discern, other than the fact that, yeah.
Understood, understood. Okay. Yeah, yeah, there's so much information on there that I'm trying to just kind of understand that. Yeah, okay, okay. And the garage stays where it is. Nothing changes there, no changes there.
No change.
All right. Okay. Thank you. You have anything to add on the utilities that are going to be going underground?
As part of the conditions, we're going to be required to underground the electrical. The rest of it will remain possibly being upgraded, sewer, gas, water. But definitely, we're going to underground the electric.
Electric, okay, okay. Thank you. No more questions.
Commissioner Santa Cruz, any more questions, applicant?
Yes, I do have one question for the architect. Are you also part of this design responsible for the fencing on this house?
Um, I would say that the owner and I agree that we should be changing it per the plans. And Ruth was, the owner was the one who would like to see us keep some of the fencing and then replace some of it with redwood.
Okay, as part of the fencing replacement, would you agree that the tree number, the tree letter E should be removed? Because it's in the middle of the fencing?
No, I'm not saying that the, the fencing dictates the removal or non-removal of the tree. I'm agreeing with the arborist and the two homeowners that the tree should be removed. But that's not the condition, that's not, the fencing doesn't dictate the removal of the tree, no.
But I can see in the diagram that the fence go through the tree.
Yeah, I believe that's the case.
Okay, it would be a lot easier to remove it, right? To make a nice fence.
Well, I, I don't know if that's the case. I mean, you can always move a fence around a tree or even butt up against a tree. I, I would, I've seen that plenty of times, too. So I think this is the fact that the fencing is old is more of a determinant as to replacing the fence than anything else.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Ramirez, do you have any questions, the applicant?
Oh, yeah, for the architect, is this a total teardown? Or are you trying to save any of the existing, existing structure?
Well, when we first started, we considered going with the existing footprint. But I believe due to the age of this home, A, the footings are inadequate, they're too shallow, there's no steel, and they're cracked. And so we discussed that with my engineer and the geotechnical engineer, and we decided that it would be better and actually cheaper to be able to get rid of the existing foundation and build new.
Yeah, okay, got it. Thank you, thank you. That, that's it, that's it for me. Questions to the architect?
Okay.
Thank you very much. Then we'll go to the public portion and open it up for people who wish to speak. And I'll turn it over to Janet for this portion.
We're now opening public comment for item number two. If your hand is raised, your name will be called for this item. We will lower your hand after you speak. Those joining by telephone can press star nine to raise and unraise your hand. In just a moment, I will list the name of the person whose hand is raised. And I will go ahead and pause for just a second to see if we have any other. I know I have one person with their hands raised now, but if we give it a few seconds and see if anybody else wants to speak on this item. Let's see. Right now, I just have one hand raised, and that's Ron Snow. Mr. Stone, please accept this request. Unmute your microphone and begin speaking. You'll have five minutes, and you'll be notified when your time ends.
Okay, I just got the unmute. Thank, thank you again. I, I do want to thank all the commissioners for, for advocating and being stewards of, of the significant trees and just the ambiance of trees in our, in our county in general. I did have a couple of questions, which maybe I can promote, and then hopefully that might be a discussion point. And that is tree C is, I think it's important that any underground work or any other construction work, that trees C and the other tree that's on the other, in that vacant lot, I, I take it that's a vacant lot that, that's there, that those trees are not, their roots are not damaged by the underground utilities and that care is made to, to protect those trees. My, my other question, so one is to make sure that those trees aren't going to be impacted by the underground utility work or any other related construction work. The other aspect is, they said they had one permission for tree E from one neighbor, but that, that actually looks like it's a, it's a tree that impacts three properties. And I wanted to make sure that all three property owners were aware and had, and had okayed that tree removal. I much prefer trees that are significant to be simply maintained and cared for by pruning and, and to keep those trees. To remove that tree would appear that that section of the neighborhood would be sort of blighted from any, any big tree there. On tree D, I think the, the arborist, this is a common, this is another common thing that happens with developers, is that it's really. uh, it's really easy to get a arborist to say almost anything you want because you can use sort of imaginary words. So the arborist on one hand says that tree is in fair condition, that the concern isn't as much the health as it is that it might be conflicting with construction equipment and that the roots might be damaged because of the new construction. Yet that tree is far away from the home. And if you look at the distance between tree D and trees A and B, which are over by the driveway, there is an enormous amount of distance that allows construction uh, vehicles and equipment and uh, work to occur without being near that tree. So there's not a a reason for, from a construction standpoint, it would appear to protect that tree. I think the that you may want to just challenge that a little bit more. As far as the county arborist, I, the, the question would be, did the county arborist go to the property and view those trees or did the county arborist just simply review the owner's arborist report? So I think that's the the aspect of things. I think we just need to, with these trees that are are very old like this or significant, they, they deserve our close attention and, and if you look at that arborist report for D, again, that tree is in fair condition. And I think that construction equipment could it could be, it could be protected and, and avoid any kind of damage to roots or canopy. Anyway, thank you for that consideration. Thank you. Bye. Or I'm off now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Chairman Hansen, there are no more hands raised.
I see one.
But I do see that the owners have their hand raised on the other side, so go ahead.
Oh, um, thank you so much for hearing this, Chairman and Commissioners. Good morning. I'm Steve Clausen. This is my wife Ruth and we're thank you for hearing this matter. We can comment on many of those issues and I think Ruth can have, add some input onto those, those trees. There's just a, a quick note, if you, if you see them, you'd see how in the comments were right. I mean, the pruning would made a big difference. They were chopped down the tree in front and you could see the main stump and you, we'd love anybody to come visit it. Was chopped and then that root that the new branch is growing out this way burnt and over the, the home. Uh, the second thing, a lot of that foliage you see is from the tree next door. That applies it, but Ruth?
Yeah, I think Commissioner Santa Cruz, uh, maybe I could address a little bit, the majority of the reason that those two trees that we've asked for their removal is because of their condition. The top one, here's an example of how, th- this is the tree that's in front D. It's, it was cut down and then it now it has like grass growing out of its stump and then I, it's hard to tell from all the, the pictures, but it grows in, the part of it that is alive is growing into the canopy of the county cypress. And the rest of it overhangs the house. So it grows at an angle like this toward the house, is windswept and basically, um, I think anybody that visited the property would say, what, is this tree going to tip over? What's the problem with this tree? Why, why do we have this tree here? I have, unfortunately on Zoom, I don't have access to the photos, like I maybe need to, to be able to give you more visual knowledge of how that tree i- is inappropriate in the site. But we've invited, we've invited everyone in the county to come out and inspect the trees and we've asked them to come and look and and we trust that our arborist who's, who has a very good reputation in the county, he, he's put a truthful report together about the condition of that tree. It touches the house and is burned where the fire went up through it and then the rest of it is protruding into the canopy of the county tree. That's that large one, which we have complete protection measures outlined in all of our building stuff for protection of that tree that, you know, will not be damaged, along with the other two giant cypresses that we are trying to preserve. The other tree that was mentioned is the the willow at the back, which has also been cut multiple times. Someone's just chopped the top of it off over and over and over again. And then it regrows some branches. The photo that you saw is from the neighbor's yard. It sits exactly on our property line. It only affects the two properties. Um, because it's, it's not right at the corner to face the, you know, to be involved with people behind us. But it's just sitting on the property line, but has been hacked back over and over and over again. I mean, I suppose we could, we could keep it. It has no structure that, that resembles a normal tree, tree growth because it has never had the opportunity to grow except for during the time after we purchased the property. And so we've just had it growing and it's gotten some willow-like branches to it, but overall the structure of it is, is like terrible looking. You know, you look up and all you see are these stumps that are all hacked off.
And it, it wouldn't here with it. I mean, you couldn't build a fence. It's smack dab in the middle of the last.
It is in, in the middle of the property line and the, the neighbor would love to have it removed because we've proposed per all the, the requirements to replant not only another willow, but a healthy willow, just a few feet away from where that willow would be removed. So it would be in our property line and we could care for it and have it grow appropriately. And we'd be happy to buy that willow as large as anyone would allow us to to put a, a beautiful tree there rather than this one that's been so badly damaged um, by lack of, by overcare, maybe. I don't know what you would call that, but by cutting it off at the top over and over again. Anyway, so those are the two big trees. Um, we're happy to answer any other questions that anyone might have. We, we were attracted to this property by the charm of its you know, craftsman style. We've tried to stay true to that character and tried to, to build a house, you know, the intention is to build a house that would really honor the area and moss beach and preserve those beautiful cypresses that we have on the property and allow them room to grow and not have this other tree protruding up into it and and disturbing it. So those are some of our comments about those, those questions. I'm happy to send more photos. Lawrence has a huge file that we sent to him that has all the, the tree pictures from a variety of angles and we invite anyone to come to the property and take a look.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any more speakers?
We do not.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public portion.
So move.
Second.
Second, okay. Janet, roll call please.
Commissioner Gupta.
Hi.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Hi.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Hi.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Bye.
Chairman Hansen.
Hi. Uh, I'll give Steve an opportunity to speak on the public comments because we did have questions, particularly the arborist's visit plus whatever.
Yes, I'd be happy to. And I, you know, I agree with what Lawrence said in terms of relying on qualified professional reports in terms of documenting the current status and health and state of trees. It is, you know, part of the process for county staff to inspect these projects very carefully once they have been permitted. And that begins with a pre-construction inspection that occurs prior to issuance of the building permit. And at that pre-site inspection, we make sure that all the measures necessary to protect the trees to remain have been properly installed. All necessary erosion control measures and so forth. At that point, we can issue a building permit. And then there's multiple inspections throughout the construction process to ensure that not only the structure is built in accordance with code and with plan, but to make sure that all the trees that are identified as requiring preservation are properly protected and preserved. So I'm confident in our process in ensuring that the commitments made by applicants are fulfilled and that the record accurate, accurately reflects what is actually going to occur on the property. So really, um, I, I think that the main remaining issue is should certain trees be removed? And, um, you know, that is often a difficult question that needs, in my opinion, to be viewed at a case-specific level based on, you know, the native habitat of the area of development. The species of trees that will be removed because while the planning and building department certainly wants to save important and significant trees, California and other areas of the nation suffers from problems associated with invasive trees that were never meant to be there in the first place. And acacia, to my understanding, is one of those species. So with all due respect to Mr. Snow's interest in preserving trees, um, I, I think that there are very important trees that must be preserved in particular instances. And then there's opportunities to replace trees that are either unhealthy or inappropriate species with trees or other vegetation that restores the native habitat of the area. And I know that there are many knowledgeable commissioners in this area of study, so I'll stop there and let you guys take over the deliberations and I'd be happy to contribute some more on the subject, should you like my input. So that concludes my remarks, Chairman Hansen.
Thank you, Steve. Um, since we're now in our debate proportion and I think Steve did summarize of what I heard from the questions and everything else, uh, really the only issue seems to be the trees. My own personal opinion, uh, you had a very charming house there. And I'm sorry to see it go up in flames. But I think you've come back with a very charming modern version of that, that is enhanced what is there. And I'm really like the design and that you were, for the most part, be able to do it right within the footprint that was there. The lounge for the variations doesn't bother me a bit on this. Uh, again, with the trees, willows grow very fast, extremely fast. They fill out and look beautiful in an extremely short amount of time. I did not have an opportunity to go out. I usually make it to every single application, but this time I didn't, so I can't comment on how it looks, but I've seen willows that have been pruned inappropriately. And they're a disaster and trying to get it back to growing where they should look. Can't, them and redwoods just don't do that. You can't go back. You always have a mess. So I'd be considering what a willow can do and will do in that area. That's no problem for me. Acacias, uh, they're in the same category as you could lift this with me. Uh, I want to see them all removed. They do not belong on the coast side. In fact, most trees in your area never existed at any time for the last 10,000 years on the coast side. Willows did, but acacias belonged in South Africa. So I'm supportive of this plan and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Ketchum for any discussion and comments.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I too am very pleased with this house. Uh, I, I like the older house before it burned. I've been to this neighborhood and I have visited seen the trees. I think that, um, a picture speaks a thousand words. Even if you couldn't go there, the pictures included in the staff report of these two, the blackwood acacia and the willow are they were, they were just tortured. I mean, just destroyed by, I mean, of course, the blackwood acacia, you, if they were going to plant a new tree there and they said they wanted to plant a blackwood acacia, I would say no. And now they want to remove this one that's, I, I'd say great. It's an opportunity. As, uh, anyway, so uh, and the willow has been tortured ongoing until it's just, it's just a mess. It's all there in the picture and I think it's a great opportunity, not only is the house lovely, but the landscape will be fixed. Like I say, this is an opportunity to address these, um, shall I say atrocities, these two trees and put something good in there and I support the project wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Commissioner Gupta.
Thank you, Commissioner Hansen. I, I'm, to start with, I'll say I'm in support of the project. But there are some comments that I would like to make because I, I felt I could have made them earlier. General comments, uh, not necessarily about the project, but the project report, the arborist report. I thought arborist's report had some very detailed information about how the trees should be protected during construction time, the ones that are not being removed. I, I really liked reading about that. The other thing was in the project report, I, I, I thought it had good information. One comment that I have about the project report, sorry if I'm saying it in a different time here, but if in the report, we could see things in the same direction. On one page, we have something which is the north is here and the south is here. In the other one, it all turns around. So it takes for a person like me to go through the report, it takes me a little time to continue my reading because I have to go back and forth. So I, I would appreciate if something could be done about it. Okay, but, but good report there, okay? Other than that, it looks like a good design to me. Little bit non-conforming in terms of not meeting the front setback, not a concern to me. It looks like a very nice design. The willow tree, I don't even know how it could be, the diameter could have been measured to see, at least from the picture. The diameter could have been measured to determine that it was a significant tree or a non-significant tree. But yes, if it's going to be replaced later on, I'm fine with it. Okay. So great design, good work. Thank you.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Um, I'm not expert on trees, but I see, uh, I see myself sad when I see trees that are significant to be removed. I am going to depend on your expertise, Commissioner Hansen, and the opinion of Commissioner Ketchum, which they seem to be more expert when it comes to that type of trees. I like the idea of the owner saying that, that she's willing to replace the willow tree that is in a better position than the, the one that is right now. And that, I, I am, I'm very pleased to hear that. When it comes to the, um, the person who spoke about the way we are in the oral communication, when the, when, when we talk about the percentage of tree removal and the capacity and the width and everything. One things I got from his presentation, which I think it would be interested if, if, uh, Mr. Monowood can go and, 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 and I don't know if they're doing that, but obviously they're not because he's complaining. The level of accountability that the county should have to make sure that reports, the arborist report and their, and the description of the trees established when it comes to a project are verified by the county in terms of like making sure that we don't see, like he's saying that trees are 10 inches versus 12 inches. And you know, that requires some level of auditing. And that's something that I I really appreciate. He he brings over and discusses during the oral communication because that's what we basically need to do, if it has not been done yet. That's why, that's my, my observation on, on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ramirez. You're muted.
Yeah, there, there, there it is. I would say, just off, to start off, I would say that I I am very much in favor of this project. I think that I appreciate that the owners and the architect, sorry, my dog. Sorry. The, the owners and the architect are trying to, you know, bring back the character of the old house. I very much appreciate that. In regards to the, the comments I hear, especially, you know, coming, as far as the the tree protection. The concern I have is that we seem to imply that some of these professionals may not be acting professional in the way that they present their report. And more specifically, with regards to the Arborist report. I I thought that this particular report was excellent and it covered all the reasons why those trees should have been removed. I think it is very obvious when one looks at those pictures that those trees were actually cut at some point, but they were never disposed of properly. The true, you know, the, the tree was not cut all the way to the bottom and the roots were not ground to, so that the tree wouldn't have a chance to come back. So the, the stump was left there, the, the trees came back because that's what they do if you don't actually properly dispose of them. So these two trees, I think that are in question, are completely bad trees. And they need to be removed, I think, because of the bad structure that they now have. And because I think that they're actually a danger either to the structure or people because of the bad structure that they have. So I would say in general, it's like not all trees are good trees. In general, that I think we're here to protect the overall canopy of the county. But I think when certain trees need to be removed, we just have to go forward and remove those trees. So that's, that's my comment on this.
Thank you. Hearing your unanimous support for this project, I will ask for a motion for approval.
I can do that. I move the, we approve the coastal development permit, nonconforming use permit and design review permit. PLN 2019 dash zero zero four eight five by making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval included in attachment A of the staff report.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in front of us. Excuse me, Janet, can you do roll call for us, please?
Commissioner Gupta.
Aye.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Aye.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Aye.
Chairman Hanson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Very much.
We'll now go into our next item.
Thank you, Chair Hanson. And congratulations to the applicants. So the next item on our agenda is discussion of the study session. At this moment, we do not have a study session planned for our next meeting. We do have two items on the agenda. Those include coastal permit, design review permit and use permit for a structural remodel in addition to existing family residence in the area of Miramar on the coast side. And then we also have the Ascension Heights grading schedule coming back to the planning commission. As you recall, their past request to grade during the winter season or their, their schedule was not approved. They have gone back to the drawing board and will be presenting their revised schedule to you at the next meeting. We do have some study sessions upcoming though, which I'll just give you a heads up on. Those include the Connect the Coastside Study Session on the Updated Draft Plan. Staff's trying to get that in front of the Midcoast Community Council first and then the next stop will be and then given that this is the start of the new year, as we traditionally do, we will be bringing the Long Range Work Program back for your review and input. And so there's a long list of plan updates and regulation updates that we've been working on. And so we'll be pleased to give you an update on where those stand at that study session. So that concludes my report on the study session, moving on to the Director's Report. The really big thing that the department has been super focused on for, well, the last, practically the last year, but in particular, the past couple of months, is rolling out the update to our online permitting system, which is the trademark is Exela, is the maker of the system. And this is really a critical step for the department. As you've heard before, when we vacated the offices in March of last year, we cobbled together an alternative means of processing permits, which is by no means perfect. It has kept our services alive, but not at the pace or quality of customer service that we seek to provide. So this new online permitting system will provide a state of the art means for applicants to submit building permits for all sorts of projects, from, you know, minor remodel to a brand new home. And I believe that we will be one of the first jurisdictions in the state, if not the nation, to have such a comprehensive online permitting system when it comes to building permits. It has been a heavy lift and we're at the finish line, but we still have a lot of finishing touches to complete. So that is why you may have seen that the department has put a temporary suspension on the acceptance of new applications. I had hoped that it would be for longer than a week, but in the interest of minimizing impacts to applicants and also in avoiding some backlog at the end of this suspension, we've limited it to a one week period, which is running this week. In any event, lots going on there and I'm excited about the upgrade, but also cautious about it because we still have a lot of finishing touches to complete before I know it is going to be fully functional. So the only other item I wanted to bring to your attention today is that as we speak, the Coastal Commission is holding a public hearing. One of the items on their agenda is the Local Coastal Program Amendment that was submitted by the Mid Peninsula Open Space and Recreation District in coordination with the Peninsula Open Space Trust to make some modifications to the requirements when you subdivide a property for public recreation purposes. As you may recall, this planning commission recommended approval of that amendment, as did the Board of Supervisors. And so the Coastal Commission is taking final action on that today. They characterized it as a minor amendment. So that indicates that the staff is in favor of it. So there will only be a public hearing on that matter if some of the Coastal Commissioners request a hearing. So as soon as we conclude this meeting, I'm going to jump over that and see where that stands. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. So that concludes my report, Chairman Hanson.
Thank you very much.
I have a question. On the, will the Exela history still be available with this new system? How, how will that work?
Yes, all the permit data from the existing records will be transferred over. So there will be no loss of data there. In fact, my expectation is that search function will be more user friendly for our constituents who like to keep track of what's going on with permits. So yeah, that is certainly one of our objectives. And Commissioner Ketchum, if you'd like to do, help us out with some of the testing, we'd be happy to invite you, any of the commissioners, if you'd like to get your hands on it. That's, it's going to be a phased rollout. We are going to start with very simple permits, re-roofs, water heaters and so forth. And then we're going to go to the more moderately complex to the very complex. So we're going to hopefully start the rollout next week. And then it will be throughout February that we'll be rolling out more and more complex permits. And there's going to be lots of testing and perfection throughout that whole time. So if any of you are interested in being part of that testing, we certainly welcome it. Just drop me a note and I'll get you engaged.
Okay, it's sort of still be the Exela platform or whatever you're still going to call it that?
We call it the Online Permit Center, yeah. Or Exela calls it Citizen Access. And so, you know, the intent of the update is not only to serve applicants because we do want to make the application process as smooth as possible, but also to serve the community, to enable folks who want to check up on the status of new permit applications in their neighborhood. What's going on with a certain application? All that access will remain and hopefully be presented in a more user friendly format.
I have another question about, I was hoping you could give us an update on the SFPUC construction on top of Montero Mountain. It's been much in the news on the coast side. I sent an email to you about that last month. Do you have any update?
Yes, well, I I can tell you where we've left off. I think this is an ongoing matter that, you know, is, still has not been resolved. And let me go back to the hearing that was before this planning commission, I'd say about a year ago, perhaps a little bit longer.
August.
August of last year, is that right? 2019, okay. So that was a general plan conformity request from the SFPUC for improvements to a wireless telecommunication facility at the top of Montero Mountain. At that hearing, we heard testimony from individuals who like to hike up on that mountain, who reported that there had been activities conducted by the SFPUC, including the construction of a fence that blocked public access that was not a part of their general plan conformity request and was concerning enough that caused the staff to revise its recommendation. We had come to the Planning Commission with the recommendation that the commission concur with the SFPUC's determination that their project was consistent with the general plan. And instead, the Planning Commission adopted the staff's revised recommendation to deny the general plan conformity because it appeared that, that SFPUC had done construction that was in violation of the county's general plan. Following that hearing, we sent a letter to the SFPUC informing them of that decision and identifying the need to, I'm getting a warning signal here on my internet connection, so I'm going to turn off my video. We sent a letter to the SFPUC informing them that they need to determine if any of the work that they've done encroached in the coastal zone and if so, get the proper coastal development permits. We never heard back from the SFPUC on that matter. And since that time, we have received additional complaints regarding the fencing and construction that the SFPUC did. And we continue to believe that unless the SFPUC can establish otherwise, that they will need to obtain an after the fact coastal development permit for the work that has been done without permits. So that's where it stands, Commissioner Ketchum. So certainly there's more work to be done in terms of addressing the unpermitted work. And I'll be happy to keep the commissioners updated as we proceed in pursuing resolution of this matter. I don't know if you have any more recent information that you'd like to add or that you'd like staff to consider, but certainly open to your input on that.
Well, I, I, there was an article in the Happen Bay Review that was actually quite accurate, well, it seemed, it seemed well sourced. And there was a, several meetings at Montero Water Sanitary, just community members about this had gone up. People had gone up there and they took the top off the mountain and all this stuff and took away the markers. And as I understand it, the way it stands now is that SFPUC has halted the project and they're going to regroup, whether that means they'll just not do it there or whether they'll come and get there after the fact, CDP, I don't know. But it does seem as though, the, when we had this on our agenda, that that the complete plan wasn't really presented to us, whether that wasn't even communicated to the county, I don't know. But anyhow, currently, they're not working on it anymore. They've pulled off. Anyway, so thank you for that. Were we going to do election for chair and vice chair?
Yes.
Today, okay.
So I'm going to, Commissioner Santa Cruz had an idea, so I'm going to let him speak and probably it's a motion he's going to put forward.
Okay, I was saying that, and that I propose, due to the knowledge she has and most of the projects falls on her district, Commissioner Ketchum to be the chair and I may continue vice chair if he wishes to do so. Otherwise, you may select another vice chair. That's my proposal.
Any comments, discussions?
Oh, any second.
Second, I second the motion
Yes.
For Commissioner Ketchum to be the chair.
Want to see everybody nod their head with us?
Okay, great.
Okay, can we just accept this for affirmation?
Yes.
Ordinarily, yes, but unfortunately, because of the governor's executive order, this is a vote and it does require a roll call.
Okay.
Hey. You're on.
Commissioner Gupta.
Aye.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Aye.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Aye.
Chairman Hanson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Lisa.
I I do like, would like to add my congratulations and also say thank you to Chairman Hanson for being such an effective chair over the past year. Thank you so much for all your service.
Well, I tried different formats throughout the year, trying to figure out what's most effective. You know, never done this remotely before and some were effective, some weren't. So thank you for putting up with me, saying how they rolled out as I tried them out. Hopefully, they were subtle enough, but I came in almost with every meeting with an idea, what if I did and whatever? So Lisa, I hope you said, I like that or I, I think I could do a better, go for it, have fun.
I have, I have to say that I hang on your every word and sometimes you have inspired me. And I mean, it's inevitable that sooner or later it'd have to be chair. And from the first meeting, was it only a year ago? The, in Happen Bay, when we had that special meeting, was that only a year ago? Oh, my gosh. Anyway, and how you got up and spoke before that huge crowd. And so, yes, I I have, I will try to emulate you. I don't know if that's right. And so, yes, I, I have, I will try to emulate you. I don't know if that's the right word, but anyhow, thank you.
You do well. We've all done well, so, and I know you will too.
Thank you. Also, Commissioner Hanson, in my personal point of view, not that you're leaving because it sounds more like a departure of observation, but I wanted to make sure that you understand that I really appreciate your mentorship and expertise that I learned so much from your participation as a president, was the chair of the committee and your way of performing your duties have not dropped in, in a, in a death year. So I really appreciate your, your performance and your work.
If I, if I may add that, also Chairman Hanson, over the years, I've seen you perform, you know, more than once the chairmanship. And I think you do it pretty much better than anybody. And I've always, you know, looked after you to, you know, for inspiration. And absolutely, thank you for guiding us through this really difficult times really that we've gone through. I think your expertise really came through to, to help us get through this.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Hanson. Thank you for your leadership. And you may have felt you are trying different things, but we were so thrilled that we could go through, finish this year, which seemed like a long year, but it went very smoothly. Thank you. Thank you for your mentorship and your leadership.
I'm just looking forward to coming back to Redwood City.
I was, I was going to mention that as like, you know, I, I think it's, it's time at some point, hopefully soon, that we, we come and have a face-to-face meeting. You know, I'm glad that we've been able to continue to do the meetings, but there's nothing like doing it in person.
Okay.
Okay.
I could also take this opportunity to say thank you to Janet. Navigating this year has been extremely difficult and Janet has proven to be such a valuable asset to the county when it comes to managing these Zoom meetings and electronic meetings. And so I think, you know, we would have really suffered without her at the helm of all the technology. And so thanks to Janet for making it a smoother year.
I appreciate it, Janet.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
So, okay, today's meeting.
Wait.
Thank you.
Actually, one more thing. Are we doing chair and vice chair or did I miss who vice chair was? Maybe that was already.
Commissioner Santa Cruz is vice chair.
Oh, got it. Okay, perfect. So I'm congratulations to you both. I look forward to, you know, starting with you both and lots to learn. So I, I am really excited to work with, with both Lisa and Mario. So, welcome.
And thank you, Janet. Thank you very much for your continued support and willingness, attitude that you have to help all of us.
Here.
Bye-bye.
Okay.
Bye. Take care.